The governing board closed. We'll call to order the study session for Mesa City Council for Thursday, April 10th, 2014. Once again, I'd like to excuse Councilmember Summers, who is not with us and won't be joining us by phone. First item on the agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the fiscal year 2014-15 summary of proposed budget.
Mayor.
Mr. Brady.
So let me, if I could, I'd like to kind of give a brief kind of overview of some of the items that will be included in, that are being proposed in the budget. Candace will cover the financial side of the budget, but kind of anticipation of the departments coming to council and providing some presentations, I want to kind of give some context of things you can, maybe we can be looking forward to in the budget. We continue the theme that we discussed back in February with the council during our strategic planning process. In the discussion we had there during that time, we talked about the fact that while we are seeing recovery in many areas, in areas such as sales tax collections, we are continuing to recover back, we still have yet to recover back to 2006. So we've, we're almost there, eight years later, but we're still recovering. And as such, while we're seeing that improvement, we're also experiencing in some areas, and Candace will talk about this a little bit, significant inflationary increases, whether it's in service contracts, commodity costs, fuel, as you might expect. And so we're having to make those adjustments as well, as such that we came to the conclusion early on that we really need to try to hold our current level of services and expenditures the same as we currently provide today. And so that was the direction that we followed coming out of that session, as well as the discussions with the departments. Many of the departments have done a very, most, all the departments did a very good job of finding ways to live within the current budgets, despite the fact that they're experiencing in some areas, some significant increases. Obviously, we've had to make a few adjustments in some areas, and I just want to touch a little bit upon some of the things we can look, we're proposing that will be included in the proposed budget. Again, as I mentioned before, we're trying to keep the tax burden, as far as the sales tax and those related costs to our operations, are still below what was, we experienced in 2006. However, if council recall, five years ago or so, I think it was, that we took advantage of the COPS grant that provided for 25 police officers. This will be the first year in this budget, and it's an impact in our budget, that now we're carrying the full cost of the 25 police officers. Call early on, we were receiving funding from the federal government, I think it was Department of Justice, I believe, or I'm not sure specifically which agency, but it was helping us to maintain and continue to have those officers during times when we were actually making significant cuts. So this year, in the budget, we have the full cost of those 25 officers. In addition, I'm pleased to share with the council that working with Mesa Public Schools, as well as Gilbert Public Schools, but Mesa Public Schools has been able to come to us with a proposal where they have identified a grant that will allow us to join up with them to provide for six additional school resource officers out of, from the, from the city police department. That will be significant. They'll provide for coverage in every high school, an officer in every high school, as well as, I believe, we have approximately 10 middle schools between Mesa Public Schools and Gilbert Public Schools. We'll have six officers, I believe, covering 10. We won't have one for one, but we'll have a few officers covering two middle schools, but that's better coverage than we have today. Some in middle schools, we don't have any coverage. And so we're significantly moving forward with a public safety presence in both, in all our high schools and every day in our middle schools.
You said six high schools. There's seven.
Oh, sorry.
So is it all, is it?
It's all the high schools.
Desert Ridge?
All the high schools.
Okay, so Desert Ridge includes.
All the high schools. And then we're splitting time on some of the middle schools. That's what, that's what I've been told. So that's, we appreciate working with Mesa Public Schools on the, getting, acquiring this grant, and we look forward to providing that. The city will pick up the cost of those officers outside of the, during the summer, no schools not in session. Then also, we want to really recognize the fire department for their innovation. We've talked about for the last several years where they have tried, brought the innovation forward of our TRVs and the success that we've enjoyed because of employing those throughout the service areas from the fire department. What we are, what they have been able to do is reallocate resources within their existing budget to add five additional dispatchers, fire dispatchers. What's important about that is these dispatchers now, with the help of Dr. Gary Smith, have developed specific protocols that will allow us, we believe, to more efficiently and effectively deploy TRVs, maybe even at a greater level than we are today. So that because the protocols are developed out, it'll help us to determine probably more frequently and more effective use of the TRV. So we look for that program to continue to increase. So again, we're adding five fire dispatchers within this budget. Another item that council members brought up, Councilmember Glover specifically has been an advocate of this, we are going to be accelerating the installation of the gates and the alleys. And so next year, we're going to be allocating over $400,000 to continue to accelerate that program and push hard. We've got a pending list of requests from neighborhoods, from blocks that would like to see those. So we're going to, we need to step it up with more, procurement, getting more contractors on board and capacity to add more gates, so we're going to add that. They, really, the benefit for that is, one, it's something, it helps the neighborhood, it helps deter crime, so hopefully it reduces calls for service, but also reduces our cost for alley maintenance. So there's some offset, actually, in our maintenance cost once we close the alley. So we're going to be accelerating that even more. That'll come out of our streets budget. And then another couple of other items I want to mention is we have been working, and I know there's been some discussion working with the colleges downtown area about how we can continue to brand and, and get the word out and help recruit more students for those colleges. We are actually, we helped the colleges in their first few years with providing kind of a discounted lease as they kind of ramped up. Those lease amounts are, will be increasing during this next year. And what we've, we're proposing to do is to take a significant amount of that and use it as a match for a dollar that they would contribute to do additional marketing, joint cooperative marketing with the schools, to help them get the word out about their presence here and continue to help grow their student population. So that's something we've been able to work out with them. They seem very favorable with that. Another item that we want to just kind of make council aware of, a proposal that could result, we think, in increased opportunities in co-compliance. What we're suggesting to the council is that we're setting aside the dollars that we've collected as a result of our service warrant, service line warranty program that there, the company that's out there soliciting and proposing to provide for a warranty for breakage in lines. The city has benefited from that and payments to us. We've set those side, those dollars aside, we haven't spent those. What we would propose is we set those aside specifically for the purposes of supplementing, expanding our efforts in co-compliance. So however we can determine we can use those. Right now, dollars we have right now are kind of a one-time, they're the one-time payment upfront. So we're not right in the position today, maybe, to do recurring costs, but certainly we could supplement that for maybe specific initiatives where we need to bring in a lot of co-compliance officers in one area to do a sweep or equipment, but we, we would propose that we take those dollars specifically and set them aside to supplement co-compliance efforts. And then the last item, there's been some discussion, and we've been approached by a variety of groups about what we can do to help out agencies or assisting those that are struggling, maybe employment, but they're struggling making their rent payments or providing for food, shelter. What we've had some discussions with United Way and some others, is that what maybe the city could do to assist with that is to provide for direct, to provide for a service where we would provide for additional amount of vouchers, utility vouchers, so that agencies that are helping to meet those that are in an emergency situation or circumstances where they're not able to pay their bills, that they could use these vouchers for, from the city utilities to help offset some of those costs, so then they could find other ways to pay for their rent or, or for food. And so we're working on that concept and how that would mechanic, how that would logistically work, but we think that would be an effective way for us to help out a lot of our agencies that are trying to help out those that are disadvantaged in providing some additional resources specifically for utility payments. So those are just, there's more to come, but I just kind of wanted to highlight some of those as we kind of get into the mechanics of the budget and the numbers of the budget. So, thank you.
Candace.
So what we have today is we actually provided you some additional information this year than we normally have provided you in the past. So while we will be going over a presentation today, which will hit the highlights of those things that are either included or not included in the budget, so you kind of know where we stand, what we've also attached is a council report that goes into a little more depth on each of those areas. So if there's any questions that have come up from either reading through that, or if you have questions after this meeting, after, when you've read through that, we'll be happy to address those as well. Gives you a little bit more background information about where we stand on the budget. But going forward, the first thing that we need to, that we need to say is the 14-15 budget is balanced. The proposed budget that we have here before you today is balanced, balanced, what that means is that our anticipated expenditures are within our anticipated resources for the 14-15 fiscal year. The departments, as Chris mentioned, we were, this is really a hold the line budget. The departments were asked to stay within their allocations that they had in 13-14. We don't have, we didn't have the capacity to grow programs or to expand unless they could find that capacity within their own allocation by reassessing and reprioritizing within their department. So this is really a hold the line type of a budget. As Chris mentioned, there were a few things, inflationary pressures that were not able to be held within the allocation of those particular departments, things like personal services, vehicle usage, contract renewals, and then additional parks and so forth coming online. And we'll kind of go into a little bit of those to tell you where those pressures are coming from. This, the proposed budget also includes the CI, the capital improvement program that we gave you a briefing on a couple of weeks ago. Those projects that occur in 14-15 or are anticipated to occur in 14-15 are included in the proposed budget. One of the things that we asked the departments to do this year is to really look at their lifecycle needs. What a lifecycle is, is these are items that are not a construction project per se, but they're large ticket equipment that we know has a particular lifecycle, a three-year, a four-year, a five-year lifecycle that we know we're going to have to do a big payout at the end of that lifecycle to replace those types of equipment. There's a lot of areas, like the information technology area, where we do upgrades on our applications, on our computer applications and so forth. Our parks infrastructure, we know there's a lifecycle on replacing and repairing playground equipment, irrigation, and those types of things, as well as our vehicle replacement program, excuse me, we have a vehicle replacement program where we're trying to anticipate where there might be an out year where we have a large number of vehicles that are due for replacement based on their repair policies and their age and their mileage and so forth. As well, we asked fire and the police department to both look at their equipment, their breathing apparatus, their radio replacements, those types of things. So we really asked them to go out and identify those going into the future. We knew that we would not have the funding to take care of all of those needs in the 14-15 fiscal year, but we wanted to make sure that we're starting to identify those so we can start and make sure that we're planning for those in the mid-year forecast. So they did a great job. They identified a lot of items within the departments. At this point right now, they are in our unfunded needs category. We have maintained our lifecycle replacement level for 14-15 at the 13-14 level. So we are still replacing items, we're just, there's still a pent-up demand from all those items we have not replaced over the last four or five years. So those are some of the things that we've identified this year, and over this next year, we'll start working on prioritization so that if funding, if and when funding becomes available, we know what areas of the city we want to start focusing on, to start catching up on that area. In our personal services, one of the things that we do each year as part of the budget preparation is we project the personal services cost of the upcoming year. What that means is we actually go down to exactly what positions we have today, what employees are in those positions, and what the cost of those employees in those positions are. What that means is we actually look at the benefits they have selected, the range of their sal, their salary ranges, whether they're eligible to increase in those salary ranges, the pension costs going into the next year, as well as medical costs going into the next year. So each year, that is recalculated and reset, going from year to year. So we don't take last year's modified and go into next year's, we actually start from a zero base and recalculate it each year. So those are included in this proposed budget. Chris mentioned that we, that does include the 25 additional, or 25 police officers that we will continue to fund and is completely funded on the city side. At this point, it's about $2.9 million for those particular 25 positions that's included in the budget. Pension costs play a large factor in our personal services calculations. As we've heard, there are different, there are three different pension plans that we have here within the city of Mesa. They are all outside plans, so the rates are given to us, they're not rates that we set. For the 14-15 fiscal year, on our general governmental impact was about $1.5 million between the 13-14 and the 14-15 fiscal years. Most of that is due to the public safety personnel retirement system increasing, and we've kind of shown you some of the rates that have increased between 13-14 and 14-15. In the last, in the, over this last year, or last few months, there was a court ruling with the public safety personnel retirement system that will disallow, in essence, some of the cost containment measures that were put in place a couple of years back. The effect of the city on that is we won't be affected in 14-15, but however, when we start going into the 15-16 fiscal year cycle, we do expect some large increases in those particular pension rates to make up for the expenses they'll now have to retro out to those particular employees for the last couple of years. So we don't know what those are now, but we will be looking at that and keeping that in mind when we look at our mid-year forecast over the next few years of where our costs are going to be going. Our employee benefit trust fund is a trust fund that both the employees and the city of Mesa contribute to. It's where we pay out our medical and dental claims, as well as life insurance and vision. When we looked at going into the 14-15 fiscal year, when we, when we look at this particular trust fund, while it has an impact on our fiscal year, we actually look at it on a calendar year for when we're looking at the premiums for those particular medical plans and dental plans, and whether we think there'll need to be an increase in the next calendar year plan. Looking forward to the 2015 calendar year, at this time, we do not anticipate a need for an increase in the premiums overall. Over the summers, when we actually review those plans, look at plan structure, and look at cost recovery of the different plans. So while there may be some outcome to that review that shows that we might have to look at the tiers or those types of plans, overall, we do not anticipate the need for an increase in the premiums. However, an incre, no increase in the premiums does not mean there's not an increase in the city contribution. The city contribution going into next year is going to be an increase of about $5.5 million over the 13-14 fiscal year. The reason for that is twofold. One, during the, during this particular fiscal year, we had what we call the premium holiday. We had experienced some, our expenses were coming in less than we had originally anticipated. That allowed us to take last December off, if you will, of paying premiums. So the employees received a premium holiday where they didn't pay into their premiums for those medical and dental policies, as well as the city. So there was some city savings in our city contribution. That is not currently anticipated for 14-15, so that, that constitutes most of that increase in our contribution between the two years. The other thing that also factors into that are our additional retirees. Our medical plan includes our retirees as well, those who are eligible to go into the plan. As retirees move into the plan, they are backfilled, their positions are refilled, so there's really a net increase to the number of participants in the plan in total. So each year, that city contribution would go up for that. One of the things we did new this year is we did have a self-insurance trust fund board. They have met three times this year. Councilmember Summers sits, sits on that board. And they have met three times. We brought all three of our trust funds, which we'll talk about today, to that board and discussed the history of the trust fund, why they're there, what our current fund balance, our reserve balance philosophy is, and what our contribution recommendation is coming into the next year. The recommendation going into the 14-15 fiscal year is that the city contribution to the employee benefit trust fund be set at about $51.4 million. Again, this is a target that we shoot for, and then we set the rates to try to accomplish that target over the 14-15 fiscal year. And the trust fund board did approve that recommendation going forward. The other item we have is our workers' compensation trust fund. Again, we did take this one to our self-insurance trust fund board as well to review. For the coworkers' compensation, we actually have seen some claims increase over the last few years. So over the last about two or three years, we've seen our, our total expenses in workers' compensation go up a million dollars. It is, right now, about a seven, six to seven million dollar per year expenses, so a million dollar increase is a significant percentage. In that, going from 13-14 to 14-15, we're actually seeing a $2.9 million increase in what the city needs to contribute. That is a 100% city contribution, there is no employee contribution in this particular fund. The reason why it's 2.9 and not just the one is that we actually had some reserve balance that we were able to use in 13-14 that allowed us to contribute less in 13-14 than the actual annual expenses.
Councilmember Richens.
You've had a long narrative, I figured you needed a break by now.
Thank you.
So, what's the root cause of the increase in workers' compensation costs? Why are our employees getting hurt on the job, and if they are, you know, what adjustments are we making in department safety to mitigate this increase? That's pretty significant.
Yes, Councilmember, Mayor Councilmember Richens, we, that, this is a concern to us. There's two factors that go into this. One is just the cost of healthcare going up as part of, a significant part of the crease, the increase. So as an employee may get hurt on the job, just the cost of treatment continues to grow. But one of the things that I've challenged departments is we really need to look at this trend, and this is kind of a longer trend, that we just need to be really careful to make sure there's not something in there, whether it's related to frequency or severity. Those are the two areas that we'll continue to look at. And so we are concerned that there may be a relationship in some departments where we see more frequency, and then in some others where we may see a higher, not so much a frequency, but the severity of the injuries may be growing. And so we need to pay more attention to that in this coming year, and we've, I've mentioned to the departments, that's something we're gonna, I'm going to get very involved in this coming year, is to really assess that and see where that's, where that at. We have a very good safety department, they get out there, they do a lot of instruction and discussion, but we just need to stay on top of this because this comes right out of our pocket.
Any particular departments in the enterprise funds and the utilities?
Well, obviously, you're, they're going to have probably a significant share of that, just because of the nature of the work they're involved in, in utilities, is inherently probably at more risk than others. But we want to, I, I can't give you all the information right now, it's something that we really need to get involved in and take a look at.
Just as long as nobody's getting hurt on playground equipment, we'll be fine. Employees.
Employees, yes, that would be a problem.
It's been such a dry.
Now it's playground equipment. Thank you for using a more, a subtler description of our playground equipment. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. You know, there has been a, it's more than a 20-year trend downward in terms of claims filed in Arizona, and I think healthcare has all, has been identified really as the prime driver for increases in worker comp costs in the industry. The other issue is that we've actually, we've stayed robust in terms of projects, construction projects and things like that, and when with the economy improving, that's, that's part of the cost of us having all these projects simultaneously, because we just have some employees that are at some greater risk because of the activity that is occurring as well. The other thing, and I'm glad to hear you say that the safety is still continuing to be aggressive, because one of the things that tends to go away when recession hits is safety programs get axed and, or supervisors change, new supervisors come in who don't understand the importance of the, of the safety side. So it's, I'm glad you're doing that, because that, that's, that's been really the key factor over the last 20 years, by employers emphasizing safety, making sure supervisors at every step of the way know that safety is important as well, and not, not give people a hard time for filing claims, but making sure they understand that the workplace is safe. But I think we've really managed the program pretty well, but I think there, there are very obvious, I think, reasons for the, for costs going up. It's part of our success in, in really over the last five or six years with, with the federal funds, that we've had all the different projects that have been going. You just have some increased exposure because of the nature of that work.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
One of the items that we have talked about, as well as our, our vehicle usage costs, and what we're seeing is that over the course of the last few years, again, fuel costs have increased, as well as the part, cost of parts have increased, the cost of labor has increased. And so over the last few years, what we're seeing here in the effect for the 14-15 fiscal year budget, it's not a one-year effect, it's a cumulative effect. And what's happened over the last few years is the departments have been able to cover those overages or those increased costs with other savings from, from other areas of their department. Now, at this point, we've kind of talked about it a little bit in February, we're just not seeing those departmental savings anymore. The inflationary pressures have caught up to any savings that were available in the budgets, and we had to go in this year and actually do a true-up, if you will, of those vehicle usage costs for those high utilization departments. Specifically, the issue was the police department and solid waste department. Those areas that are out on the streets every day, running their vehicles, we're just not able to keep up with the cost of the, of those, of that particular thing. So in the general governmental impact for 14-15 was an increase of about $1.9 million. The bulk of that is for the police department, a couple of the departments in there as well. And on the enterprise fund side, the 1.6 million was for the solid waste department, where we had to make an adjustment into their budget for the upcoming year.
Hey, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
And then to that point, in terms of vehicle usage costs, we've had concerns expressed by those departments that you identified, because of the widely varying bills that they've been getting from fleet services and bills that had significant errors in them as well. And I've also heard concern that the, there's more of a, an interest in going outside for repairs because it's less expensive than what's happening with our services. And so this is an area, I know that I've talked about with the city auditor, that there's some real concern with the, the, you know, quite honestly, inaccuracies that have resulted in huge bills to departments that had to go back and, and be fixed. And so not a lot of the items that you're talking about in this area have been subject to huge inflationary costs. Fuel prices have been going up and down, and equipment in, in that field for a few repairs have been going up and down. So it's, I don't, I, I guess I would challenge the notion that the pressure is due to inflationary costs. So I think this is an area that we need to look at, again, a lot more closely because of the inconsistencies received by particularly our major departments.
And Mayor and Councilmember Kavanaugh, what, what we've had been doing over the past about six to nine months, as the budget office, along with the fleet department, has started to look at all of the usage charges, exactly what those costs are that go into there, where the costs are coming from, how they're allocated and how they're charged out. We actually did quite a big project last summer to review these particular areas of concern. We formulated a new policy of how the charges would be dispersed, how it would be projected. So we've actually put that in place last October. Right now, we're starting to do our review to see how those particular policies are working. There have been a couple corrections that have been to be, been made over time. Obviously, every, every process has various points of risk, and so we're looking at those points of risk to see how we can better fulfill those, making sure that vehicles are with, are classified correctly. That's one of the areas that we had concern in, some vehicles were not classified correctly and therefore receiving the incorrect charge. At the end of the year, there's a reconciliation done against all of the costs that go through the fleet department, as well as all the charges that have gone out to the departments. We'll be continuing to do that, but we're really taking it down another level and looking at the vehicle classification themselves. So these are two particular areas, the police department and the fleet department, have vehicle classifications that only contain their classifications of vehicle, so they're not mixing with any other departments for these particular ones. And they'll be the ones, because they have the highest usage, because they have the highest number of miles that are driven, they are the ones we're taking more particular concern and care with. It is an ongoing process, and we'll be happy to come back and, and update you as we progress through that process. One of the things that we're looking at for the vehicle usage costs, also on the solid waste vehicles, as you know, that we are doing in the middle of a conversion, of converting their diesel vehicles into, or into compressed natural gas to CNG. We're hoping that will decrease some of the fuel costs going forward, some of the equipment costs going forward. We're doing that on a lifecycle replacement, meaning we have not accelerated the replacement of those particular vehicles. As those vehicles, vehicles come due for replacement, we are replacing them with the CNG vehicles. One of the other areas that we have talked about is our contract costs. One of the things that we found this year was that when we went out to renew our parks' maintenance contracts, and these are our existing parks, these are not any of the new parks coming onboard, but for existing parks, we did see a significant increase in the renewal rates coming in, the bids that we received. Total impact for fiscal year 14-15 is $1.4 million. The contracts that these particular areas maintain, some of, the bej- The contracts that these particular areas maintain, some of, the majority of these are actually basins, are stormwater basins and parks. So, the impact of the general fund is about a half a million dollars for fourteen fifteen. Those are the park-specific maintenance that we do. The other impact is about $900,000, which is the basin, stormwater basin maintenance, and that would affect the environmental compliance fund. And so, we'll be coming back to you next week when we talk about utility rates and our fees and charges to talk about our environmental compliance fee that we currently have. Maintenance for the new parks is also included in the fifteen, the fourteen fifteen budget. And these are the parks that were approved in the 2012 park bond authorization. So, some of these projects are currently scheduled to start coming online during the fourteen fifteen fiscal year, and so, we have anticipated the operations and maintenance costs of those parks coming online. They have not been adjusted based on what was originally in the forecast, so we will need to review those at this time to see what the operation and maintenance needs are for those parks based on our most recent contract pricing that has come out. So, right now, they have not been adjusted going forward. This is really just kind of a summary of the various areas that we talked, talked about, kind of putting, quantifying it into the dollars. These dollars are all included in the fourteen fifteen fiscal year. You can see the parks bond package at the bottom, so we have allocated 1.1 million dollars for those parks that we anticipate to come online or to start in the fourteen fifteen fiscal year. The Central Mesa Light Rail Extension, that is, right now, the extension is currently ahead of schedule. So, while we did not anticipate any fourteen fifteen fiscal year expenses, at this time, we don't know if they will stay ahead of schedule. We want to make sure that we are ready, so that we are, so that we have the capacity that when they're ready to go, we're ready to go as well to start the operation. So, that's kind of been put in as a placeholder in case they do stay ahead of schedule at this point. Some of the staffing that we look at, again, this is personal services, the reason why we spend so much time talking about personal services is because we are a service organization. Personal services is our greatest resource, as well as our greatest expense. So, when we look at our staffing for fiscal year thirteen fourteen, again, this is a hold-the-line budget, which means very minimal changes were made in these particular areas. One of the things that we found during the thirteen fourteen fiscal year is that our contracting activity has gone up within the city of Mesa. When that, when the construction activity goes up, that is a workload issue for our Development and Sustainability Department, because they're the ones, they're doing the planning, the building inspection and so forth, and the review. With that also comes revenues, though, as well, for the permits and so forth. So, during the thirteen fourteen fiscal year, they, we included some additional positions into their department to take care of that workload, and those are significantly offset by the revenues that they receive for the work that they're doing. Of the 13.1 positions in thirteen fourteen, 11.5 of those were a direct response to the construction activity within the city of Mesa. Going into fourteen fifteen, again, again, we asked the departments to really evaluate how they're using their resources, how to prioritize the services within their department. And we really had a lot of the departments who took a real hard look at their positions to try to figure out, one, do they still need those positions, or can they use temporary services or contract services to handle their peaks and flows? And then we also had others who were using a lot of contract services and temporary services, and it was more beneficial to them to convert to a full-time position. So, we actually had positions, departments go in both directions. Some departments converted positions to temporary work, and some departments converted temporary work to positions. The net of that, again, as, as Chris mentioned earlier, in the Fire Department, that was how they added five dispatchers, was savings from other areas within their department to make that within their allocation. The net of all of those was a plus four. So, that includes those five dispatchers across the city between the, the elimination of positions or conversion of positions, and the increase of positions was a plus four was the net. What that means is those four new position, net four new positions was no budgetary impact for fourteen fifteen. They were covered within the allocations. When we look at the new proposed changes, the other thing, that includes our six school resource officers, which again are offset by, for 10 months out of the 12 months of the salary with the grants through the Mesa Public Schools and Gilbert Public Schools. And the other, the rest of those proposed changes on 15.9 positions are the parks coming onboard. So, when we talked about that 1.1 million dollars that is in the budget for those on, for parks opening, some of that relates to positions coming online, and about 8.9 positions in these new positions are related to those parks coming online for next year. So, they won't be here until the park opens, but they're budgeted in, in the budget with a partial salary. One of the other areas that we went to when we talked to the, our self-insurance trust fund board, is we have one more trust fund, and that is our Property and Public Liability Trust Fund. This is the fund that would pay out the liability claims against the city. This one does not have necessarily, these are very high claim dollars usually, but not as many claims. Little, little bit different to forecast, what the expenses are going to be. We usually are around about $3 million a year in claims is usually what we budget for. We've had a high of $6 million, about 6.6 million was our high in claims since, since '03, '04. So, we've been around $3 million a year, it's about a $5 million total expenses. When we looked at this, in 1213, we actually sustained a very low expenditure, very low claim payout in 1213. It was kind of an anomaly. Sometimes it's just the way the timing is, on whether the timing happens to hit in June or July says it's whether last fiscal year or this fiscal year. I see a question.
Sorry, Councilmember Luna?
What happens if we go over? What, where does the money come from?
We have a, so, that's, that's a good question. Mayor, Councilmember Luna, we have a reserve balance, is what we do. These are actually trust funds, they are money that's set aside. We do a contribution each year in anticipation of what the expenses will be, and we maintain a trust fund balance or a reserve balance. And that's one of the things that we want to talk about today. Our current philosophy is we have been keeping about a $12 million reserve balance. One of the things that the trust fund board asked us to do was to go back and look at that balance to see if they thought that was sufficient, or if, if it could be reduced. So, we went back and looked at that, and looking at our claims again, our average is about $3 million a year in claims. Our average for the expense is about $5 million a year. We had a high where our total expenses were about $8 million. So, at this time, we think that we can recommend, we would recommend that we bring that reserve fund balance down from $12 million target, down to about a $10 million target. That we still think that's sufficient to meet a particular year that might be high, and allow us to build that back up over a course of time. For the 1213, we had, we'd actually done that about a couple of years ago, we had, when we had that, that spike, it did drop our reserve balance. And we had made the determination at that time that we would build it back up over two years, rather than just one year. When we had the 1213 claims come in, so much lower than anticipated, we were actually able to build it back up in one year. So, what we're recommending for this year is that even though we had budgeted a contribution great of about 6.3 this year into this particular fund, we don't feel that we need to make that contribution this year because of the claims history that we've had. And we're recommending that we actually reduce our, our budgeted contribution for 1314 by 3.3 million. It would give us a one-time savings to the general fund of about 2.2 million. It's not 100% general fund funded, but it's significantly funded. That would be a one-time savings in 1314. We would then recommend that going into the 1415 fiscal year, we maintain our normal contribution, which is about a $5.6 million contribution going forward. We did bring the $5.6 million contribution recommendation to the board, and they did concur with that. They did ask us to look at the reserve level and bring that back to the full council.
So, Mayor and Council, on our trust funds, once we've contributed into those particular funds, those dollars stay in the fund. And so, one of the things, and, and the reality is, those funds are set up and established to support the operating funds, whether it's the enterprise or the general fund. So, there's always kind of this delicate balance that we want to fund them sufficiently to be able to pay the claims, whether it's the liability fund or the workers' comp or the health benefit trust fund. But at the same time, we don't want to build those reserves up too much because effectively then, we're reducing dollars that would otherwise be available for operations in the enterprise or the general fund. At the end of the day, if any one of those funds, you know, we had significant claims in any one of those funds that we needed to pay, we're gonna have to go right back to the enterprise fund and the general fund to recover those costs. It's a better, we try to manage it so we're not overfunding it, but obviously, we don't want to get caught anytime during a year where we have our plans, you know, on the operations funds and then have to disrupt that by funding that. So, we try to track the history of, of claims and working with the various departments that oversee those trust funds. And so, this is kind of one of those cases that, looking at it over a period of time, we feel like we could just adjust the reserves a little bit. Now, again, if during the year, we determined that, you know, there's some claims and we would, and we use the council, and we get to see those claims kind of coming our way, and we can make that assessment, if during the year we need to make an adjustment, we can always come back to the council. You can always put money back, back, you can always put money into the trust, but taking the, we don't, we're not in the practice and will not take money out of the trust to go solve a problem somewhere else. So, that's, that's how we kind of, our philosophy of looking at it.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
And just clarification to that point, we, we talked about that, I think, earlier this year. It's under state law, it creates, those are fiduciary funds that we cannot take to use for other purposes. So, what you do is you watch very closely your contribution rate based on experience. So, we have a, you know, problem over this department, we simply just can't take the money out of that once it goes in.
And we know that if there's a state law that says if you have money in a trust fund, you would never take it, never take it to solve another problem. Nobody would ever do that. There's no precedent of that ever happening. So, why, we would never think of starting that, would we?
Never.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just a reminder of where we are with our general governmental revenues. And when we say general governmental, we're talking about our, both our general fund and quality of life sales tax, as well as our state shared revenues. These are the, I, these are the revenues that come into the city that are available for general use going in, where our projections for 1415 say that we will be around the same level as we were in about '05, '06. This is very similar to what we showed you back in February, just showing you that when we talk about a balanced budget, this is what we mean. We're talking about, when we look at our reserve balance, our total resources coming in and available for us to use, our total uses, this would include everything, this is your operations, debt service, capital, transfers to other funds that we subsidize and so forth, like the transit fund, and our ending reserve balance. Our financial policies call for us to have an ending reserve balance within 8% to 10%. The currently proposed budget has us at 8%, which is where we were originally, came to you in February, and we were projecting that we would, we would be for 1415. These does not include carryover, I do want to, do want to state that again. When we're looking at a proposed budget, we're looking at new resources and new expenditures. We will be coming back, when we come back with our tentative budget for you to adopt, that would include a line item for the carryover. Those are items that were funded in the 1314 fiscal year and for timing purposes will not be spent. We will have to move that appropriation to the next year so that we can spend it next year by state law. So, that would go on top of anything that you see here. And what it would do, it would decrease the uses in 1314 and increase the uses line in When we looked at our mid-year forecast, we reflected that the city is going to have to take a look at the structure of the budget when it comes to fiscal year 1516, if things do not change from our, our current forecast. So, we're currently forecasting, again, we are currently forecasting going forward that in 1415, we are still relying on a reserve drawdown. And you kind of saw that in that last slide, when you see that our ending reserve balance was at 33.4 million dollars, and for 1415, we're currently estimating to be at 29.3. What that means is that we are still drawing down the reserve balance in order to fund all of the necessary items for 1415. If we are still, if we are projecting, if our projections are accurate and we don't come in higher than we are projecting on our revenues, and we are at 8% at the end of 1415, that means that we do not have the capacity to do a reserve drawdown in 1516 because we are at the minimum of our financial policies that we've called for. And so, at this, that would be going into 1516, we need to start looking and make sure we're aligning properly our ongoing expenses with our ongoing revenues, and start looking at some of those one-time items as truly being one-time, one-time revenues truly being used for one-time expenses going forward. One of the things that the council has asked us to do is to look at our enterprise fund transfer and come back to you with a recommendation for updating the transfer on a more frequent basis to allow for incremental adjustments, rather than one-time block adjustments, so to speak. The transfer was held at a fixed date since 910. It was in fiscal year 910 that the particular transfer was set and, and held fixed through a, through a particular time period. An initial adjustment was made in fiscal year 1314 in this fiscal year. The adjustment was made for about 6.4 million dollars. We are recommending that a second adjustment be made in fiscal year 1415 of about 5.7 million dollars. It is a, a less of an adjustment than we made in 1314, and that adjustments thereafter be set at around 3%, which is about what our inflationary pressures on our operating budget are. This is excluding any capital or one-time items. We're seeing our, our inflation for the city of Mesa operations is about 3% when we look at in our mid-range forecast. Between the two adjustments, taking a kind of a, a two-phase approach to the adjustment, what that does is it would put us close to, but still less than, the amount that we would have in place if the transfer had been adjusted for inflation once it was set in 910. So, if we had gone back to 910 and set the, the transfer at that particular amount or level, and then from there had adjusted for inflation at that point, we would be slightly higher than what we are recommending for the 1415 utility fund transfer or enterprise fund transfer.
All right. Any questions? Hey, Councilmember Richens?
One comment I wanted to make about the, the memo that I guess you did, the 19-pager?
Yes.
That was really helpful, I think, and really kind of given a quick overview. The PowerPoint has really captured all the adjustments that are going on the departments. And so, when you read through that, you kind of really want to commend the, the leaders of those departments to have worked through the issues and really kind of boil it down really tight. So, I appreciate that. It was really well done. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Luna?
I also want to commend you on the staff report. I, I read it thoroughly and, and I appreciate the in-depthness of it, and thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
So, Mayor and Council, we'll, we, we wanted to give you all this information upfront, maybe try it this way, so you have it front, and then we'll, we'll have, we'll start scheduling, bringing some of the departments in soon. How, what's the first one?
Correct. Next, next week, we'll have Development Sustainability, so they can review the changes that they, that have happened within their department, and they were hoping to bring Public Safety, both Fire, Medical and Police Department on the following Monday, the 21st.
And we have other department schedules, so we'll try to get those in place over the next three weeks?
Really, two weeks?
Two weeks. We'll be hitting Monday and Thursdays.
You're not planning on bringing everybody?
No, no, no.
I read through that memo, there was, there was some that were pretty static.
Yeah, so that's why we gave you that report, so you'd see it. But we, there's some things that have, we, I think that with the growth and what's happening in, in Development Services, we thought that'd be a good one. Public Safety, they've done some creative things. So, really, they're gonna highlight more, you have the, the numbers, there isn't like a fiscal discussion more about, I think it is a programmatic in talking about what they're doing. But we, we'll give you the list of departments that we're proposing over the next two, two or three weeks. And if there's others that you'd like to see, we can know. But otherwise, yeah, it'll be a pretty, we've tried to give you the backup information, so you have that now, and if you want more elaboration, we can do that. But we've kind of, and I appreciate Candace and departments, worked really hard on the front end to get you that information early, so you'd have that, and that if we need to follow up with discussions with departments, we can do that.
And I'd, I'd like to thank you. You know, this past six years has certainly not been fun financially. But one thing I think I've been very, very proud of is, I, I don't know that there's another government entity in this state that has created budget stability, as well as this city has, and that is a combined effort between, I think, the policies that this group has made, but mainly our staff and our departments. And the first couple of years were rough, as we were getting used to a new reality. But, you know, how our staff and our departments have handled this challenging situation so that each year, we show up and, I, I never have felt like we were chasing our tail. You know, we knew where the challenges were, we knew where we were, where we were headed, and I want to thank staff for really working to get, to create, in many ways, a new budget culture, and for handling that in a way that is exemplary. Because we see other, other cities even today that are faced with surprises, that are faced with missed, missed estimates or calculations or whatever, and I've always felt like we, we had a pretty good handle on where we were and where we were headed, which has made our budgeting, you know, pretty, I don't want to say it's easy, because I know it's, it's not an easy task.
Yeah.
It's been incredibly challenging, but the way that you've handled it has made it seem easy. And, and that, to me, is the ultimate compliment, is you've made something extremely difficult and created a normalcy, I guess I should say, so that even when challenges came up, you were able to handle them in a way. easy. And that, to me, is the ultimate compliment, is you've made something extremely difficult and created a normalcy, I guess I should say, so that even when challenges came up, you were able to handle them in a way, they didn't create panic, didn't create crisis. I, I never, ever doubted during the last six years that we, we would be faced with a challenge that we couldn't handle. After we got through that first sixty-plus million dollar...
It was no problem.
No, I mean, but, I, you know, in reality, in, in January two thousand nine, we set in place a system that has, I think, served us very well, and that, that is not by accident. That's the result of a lot of people and a lot of differing interests coming together to be committed toward creating a financial model and approach that created this kind of, this, this kind of, of handling of the budget, and, and it's, it's really been nice. So thank you, so, to everybody, because I know everyone in that room played a big role in that, and, and thank you for doing that. Okay, anything else? All righty, we are going to delay Item 1B to a future council meeting. Mr. Brady says there's a few more things they need to tweak on that presentation before we come up. So information pertaining to the job order contract, are there any questions on the report? Okay. Item 3A, acknowledged receipts of minutes. Councilwoman Glover, motion, second from Councilwoman Kavanaugh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Here reports on meetings or conferences attended. Any reports? Okay, Mr. Brady.
Following this meeting, there'll be a community, oh, yeah, you can do that? You want me to do it?
Yeah, you go.
Okay. There will be a community and cultural development committee meeting immediately following this study session. Our next study session is Thursday, April 17th at 7:30. We also want to remind all the city employees, are invited to say farewell to the mayor. It's hard for me to say that. On Thursday, April 17th, at the Piper Theater from two to four, so invite everybody to come forward, come, come, you're invited out to that.
There'll be a wake.
There'll be a wake.
A viewing. A viewing, an Irish, an Irish wake.
And then we'll recover from that by having Wingstock on Saturday, April 19th.
So it'll be a quick recovery.
Start the party again.
It'll be long forgotten.
And Wingstock is April 19th, Saturday, April 19th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Mesa Amphitheater. There will be an Easter egg hunt for, for kids, and that starts earlier at 10:30, so invite everybody to that. And just to look forward, we have a Celebrate Mesa event at Pioneer Park on April 26th from 2:00 to 6:00. And, is this the film?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool. So Mesa Council on College, along with Councilwoman Luna, are hosting a screening of the film First Generation. Why don't you tell us a little bit about it?
It's a film that chronicles the lives of four students who are driven from poverty and actually attend college, and the struggles that they go through. So I would encourage the public to attend. It's going to be on April 23rd at the Piper Theater, and it begins at 6 o'clock, and then we're also going to provide some collateral materials for, particularly for parents that want to know how to navigate through the financial aid maze that's very difficult. So I would encourage the public to attend.
And it's free.
And it's free.
Good.
Thank you.
And I forgot one thing on the events. We had a, had a great unveiling last week of signs, and this is, sounds like a small deal, this was, this was a big deal, and our transportation engineering departments just really went beyond the call of duty. If you go down the Power Road, the new Power Road, south of the, the 202, clear down to Pecos, you'll notice a new signage, both a new type of sign, but a new design of sign that designates that stretch of road or officially as Power Knowledge Corridor. And it's pretty significant, because we've been working on this literally for five years, and we waited for this point when we could actually combine the re-signing and the rebranding to this massive road project that we were doing with the town of Gilbert and Maricopa County. And the first signs went up, we had a, a great little unveiling last week, and thanks, you know, transportation, the cherry pickers were in full, full bloom, I guess, and Kimberly from the Transportation Department literally sewed her family a, a, a cover for the sign that zipped off and fell off just graciously, and it was a, it was really cool. But the reason why I bring this up is not only to talk about how great transportation engineering were in making this happen, but also in recognizing that with the designation of the, the formal designation of the Power Knowledge Corridor, we really highlight the great things that are going on in, all along Power Road. And the corridor, to remind you, really starts clear up on McKellips and Power with Mesa Community College Red Mountain, heads past the Mesa Schools, the Mesa Academy there at Brown and, and Power, and then goes down, and once, of course, you get to the, around the 202, or 60, and then the 202, it really gets exciting, because you have the banner campus at Baywood and the, and the Heart Hospital, then also, and all the work they do there. You pull an AT Still, if you want to stretch further to the west, you pull an MD Anderson. Then, of course, you get into the, the Gateway Area, and you have ASU Poly, you have University of North Dakota, you have Chandler-Gilbert, you have EBIT, you now, will soon have Grand Canyon. I mean, it's just an amazing amount of activity, AZ Labs, you have an incredible amount of activity going on there, and, which will form the basis, I think, for some of the great economic development, educational development that'll happen in the, in that area, in that corridor, over the next five, 10, 20 years. So we wanted to get a jump on that. Hopefully, in the next few years, you'll see signage and designated clear, literally from McKellips, clear down to past Williamsville, and it's just exciting what's going on in that area, and it's exciting to be able to identify that, but mostly, thanks, and my chief of staff, Kathy McDonald, and Melissa Rondaso, and I don't see Melissa in here, helped coordinate that with traffic and engineering, and it was a, it was a very, very nice event, and, and symbolized or recognized a much bigger event, so thank you for that. Okay? All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We just want to take a minute to express our appreciation to you for these six years that we've been through together. People maybe don't realize this is your last official meeting, and just thinking back, you know, we didn't want to make it a teary-eyed kind of a deal, but...
Too late.
I know, I'm sorry. And, and just to know what I can say from all this six years of the high highs and the low lows that we've had to struggle through in these times, that no one will ever be able to take from you, or criticize you for your love of Mesa, and for how much you care about. I've often, you know, got to visit with Mayor about the good old days, and I know his passion for this community, and so we want you to know that we appreciate what you've done and what we've gone through.
Thank you. And with that... It's been a great privilege and an honor for me, and I meant what I said to the staff. It's been an incredible ride, and life is full of new adventures. I am, I am leaving now completely confident that this group that sits up here, and the group that sits down there, will continue on the great things that we started, because we have a momentum now, and that momentum is, is based on a lot of hard effort and a lot of commitment, and also love for this community. And, and so I, I have no regrets about, or doubts in leaving at this time, because I, I, I know that this community is now on a roll. And one of the, I will tell you, one of the great privileges I've had over the last couple of months, as I've traveled around the state, is to hear people talk about the Mesa experience and Mesa. And I will tell you that what has been accomplished in this community over the last six years is not gone unnoticed outside its borders. You know, when we started out this adventure, this council said one of our goals was to be a leader, and I can tell you that that's happened, and that will continue to happen. So thank you to all, and now I'm not going to take a vote. This meeting's adjourned.[1793.83]